Okay, it's seven o'clock. This is the Sherburne zoning board of appeals for meeting on Zoom. I'm Rick Novak, the chair. My fellow board members are Jonathan Fitch and Ron Steffick. They're both here. This is the continued hearing for the Coolidge Crossing 40B local initiative project. Off Coolidge Street in Sherburne. I believe if last time there was some discussion of the lighting plan. And a lot of discussion of the cons comm. Let's start with the lighting plan, which I think we've now come to rest. Michael Lesser, I see you're here. It looks like a new plan was submitted and that you were satisfied with it, or at least reasonably satisfied with it.
Correct.
Okay, great to hear.
Thank you for the changes. I'll thank you in the meeting for the changes.
Okay, terrific. Okay, I think last time we'd asked the Conservation Commission to get back to us with recommendations on what they would like us to do as we as we stand in their shoes under their local regulations, not under the state regulations for wetlands purposes. They gave us a very detailed memo on August 2nd. Thank you Conservation Commission, whoever here from the Conservation Commission, maybe Michael, maybe it's you, maybe it's others. I can't see everybody. We have so many attendees. But we thank them for that. That's very helpful. The applicant, I think there's one procedural aspect of that memo that I want to speak about, which is at the end, it talks about the possibility of our board deferring some elements of the local regulations and sending them as a sort of a later condition back to the Conservation Commission. And it's definitely my understanding through town council that we can't do that. If anyone on the call or not on the call has a case or a statute or a regulation that says that's within our powers, we're open to hearing it. But I think for now, the thought is, as suggested by council to the applicant who agrees with town council, that we really can't defer or put off our statutorily hijacked role of standing in the shoes of the Conservation Commission. So I don't know if people have questions about that.
Also, this is Michael. Michael Lesser, Conservation Commission hat this time. That wasn't fully what that last paragraph was getting at, was opposed to whether rather than doing some of the detailed work under with a peer reviewer now, whether you could write more general conditions that might be strongly worded about the fact that they would accommodate wetland considerations that would come later. It was sort of more oriented that way than to than that you would assign that kind of bylaw stuff to later.
Okay, that's a good clarification. It's still my understanding that we can't do that. I see Dennis Murphy on the line. He's one of the butters. He's very expert in 40B. If he thinks certainly Conservation could speak with him, but if he thinks we can sort of defer our statutory role of acting on behalf of the cons comm. And he has a case or a regulation to back up that. You know, we're open minded to seeing it, but for now, we're going to go with what town council says.
Again, that wasn't exactly what I meant. It was the wide understanding of what we were trying to get at there is that rather than you passing it off, the question isn't the example of, let's say, the landscape plan. How much detail gets done under your as part of the ZBA process versus a condition written that that is a little bit more general about how things happen, but or what should be done. But that I can go into that more later if you want, or your dead horse.
Michael, you're not hearing me and or I'm not articulating it well. The point of the statute is to stop us from doing exactly that.
Okay, I'll let it go.
I'm sorry. However, standing in the shoes of the Conservation Commission, we definitely are interested in hearing the peer reviewers and the public's responses to the cons comm suggestions. They're on the table. They're definitely part of our process. I think the from the development team standpoint, you had your engineer of record weigh in. Matt, if I don't want to characterize your letter, but saying, well, we think we can do A, B, and C, but we can't do D, E, and F. And I guess what I'd suggest might be a good next step, although I'll take comments from the general public is that we, the board, ask our peer reviewer to look at the cons coms memo carefully and the applicant's response carefully and and wearing his good peer review hat. Tell us what he thinks is feasible here and consistent with good practice. Board members, I don't know how you feel about that.
I basically agree with that approach. We should we should have our peer reviewer advices.
Right.
Yes, I agree. I would like the advice of our peer reviewer.
Steve Blay, are you on?
Yes, I am.
Okay, great. I just couldn't find you in the sea of faces on a couple of different screens. Oh, there you are, right next to me. Is there a I know you haven't had a chance to really digest this yet, but having seen the cons coms memo and the applicant's response, do you have a sense of what what sort of timeframe you would need to give it a thoughtful view?
I think this is something that we could do in, say, another two weeks. I don't think that would be a huge issue.
Okay. And from the applicant's standpoint, could that work?
I think that it could. Mr. Chairman, I don't know if you want, while the peer reviewers here, if you want Matt to walk through his responses at all, if it's any questions or
That'd be great, because some people may not have read the back and forth. And if Matt, you'd lead us on it, that's a good idea, Stephanie. Thank you.
Okay, sure. So I guess just as as a, just to start off, I we just and we made this clear in the letter, but we want to express that the design that is before ZBA and the current site plans was it came together as a result of a collaboration between multiple different professionals on the design team, including wetland scientists, landscape architects, engineer, as well as the the based on Sherburne team themselves. And it was not done without consideration of wetland areas, nearby wetland areas and buffer zones. So that was one of the fundamental aspects of the existing site that helped shape this development. And our our takeaway from the concom letter in general was that there was sort of this underlying tone or presumption that the design before you doesn't really factor that in. So let's now start looking at that. And we just want to express that's not the case. So while based on it could be open to suggestions, you know, as long as they're economically viable and not detrimental to the project. This project did take these these matters into account in this in the design that's before you. So just for example, I listed out in the letter some aspects of the project that did just that. And so first, from a sort of an overall fundamental standpoint, the project itself is a clustered development. So there's many units within a small footprint, which in itself is sort of a non sprawling type development, very compact in nature relative to the number of units, both from a building footprint standpoint, as well as a yard and a disturbance area. So if you look at the the amount of area that would be not by yard, say, for single family homes of this number of single family, it would be much greater than than this type of developments. It's a very compact development. Also, I want to express, and I know we've talked about this particularly in the beginning when we first did the the overview of the project, there's no wetland alteration proposed for this project. So all proposed disturbance is within upland areas. That being said, of course, some of those upland areas are within 100 feet of wetlands, which is why we're having this conversation tonight. But I just want to make clear, no wetland disturbance is proposed. It's all upland area that we're talking about. We held in the design, we held all impervious area. So building footprints, structures, pavement, parking areas, garages. All of the impervious area is at least 50 feet from the edge of wetlands. The only elements that go within within the first 50 feet of wetlands are grading utilities and stormwater. And so I just want to clarify, no structures are within that first 50 feet. The front and rear yards, if you if you study the plan and look at the grading, both in front and behind the building, they're they're very small yards. So we did not provide expansive yards. We provided small yards in order to be able to have the grading catch catch back up to existing grade to minimize the footprint of disturbance. The site is not overly parked. So there's certainly sufficient parking for the residents and the guests. But if you look at the parking ratio, it's around 1.7 spaces per unit. That's that's kind of on the low end of what would be typical for this type of development. So there's not a vast amount of surplus parking spaces that are just eating up room and adding to the impervious area. So we tried to strike that balance of enough parking, but not overly parked. The garage structure. So there's several garage structures that cover some of the surface parking and rooftops over the parking do keep some of the rainwater from contacting the pavement and picking up the pollutants that would otherwise be picked up if had they not been covered by the garages. The the runoff characteristics of the both the pre and the post development site are are very similar. So reasonably similar, I would say. So no development can have exactly the same hydrological characteristics in the proposed, but the goal is always to replicate existing to the to the maximum extent practicable. And that's what the stormwater regulations intend to accomplish. And so if the stormwater report that we submitted, it it identified several study points associated with with each of the different wetland areas. And it took a very detailed look at the runoff from each part of the site. So we didn't just take the whole site and say, what's running off it now and what's running off it in the proposed? We broke it down into many many different areas, runoff areas, study points, and we looked at that and we we made every effort to replicate the existing hydrology and that that report, those calculations have been peer reviewed. And and you've received, you know, comments on that, and we've addressed comments on that. And then lastly, the the stormwater treatment that's proposed for this site is extremely an extremely high level of treatment. So we're proposing the stormwater to be collected from the paved areas routed through what we call deep sump hooded catch basin. So there's an initial pretreatment through those. The water then goes through water quality units, which each of those by themselves meets the DEP total suspended solid removal requirement. But we go through those and then we the 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 pretreated water is then put into infiltration basins and infiltrated into into the underlying soil. So in terms of sediment removal, metals, organics, that treat we call the treatment train, sort of the series of treatment practices that the water goes through, provides an extremely high level of treatment for this site. So I just wanted to make that clear because there were some questions in the memo about if if additional stormwater treatment could be achieved. So I guess, would you like, Chair, would you like me to go through the individual comments now? I'm happy to run through them, but that was sort of the overview of where where, you know, how we think this project already, you know, meets and has been designed with with the wellens and the buffer zones in mind.
One of the great things about Gino being so diligent about posting all this online is that everybody gets a chance to see everything before the hearing. I did want to take this chance to compliment everybody involved, whether on the neighbor's side or on the applicant's side with doing a good job of getting us everything in writing well in advance of the hearings. I know the other board members and I have suffered through other hearings where everything comes in five minutes before the hearing starts in a file that nobody can read and and then whoever submitted it assumes the rest of the world magically understands it all. And everyone's been very, very great about that. So we appreciate it. So I don't think you need to read us your your responses. However, the cons comm is not the only party who's allowed to have opinions or views on the wetlands. And if there are members either speaking for the cons comm or just interested members of the public who want to be heard on the subject now, you can certainly speak up now. You'll get another bite at the apple when Steve Bulley comes back with his report. But it might be useful for him to hear your concerns now. So if there are people who are concerned with the cons comm memo or the issues it's raised or other related wetlands issues, you are invited to speak up now.
I had a question. I had a question, Rick. Am I correct in recalling that last time we met, there was some discussion of having to raise the grades on the site? And if so, has there been a revised grading plan issued?
Matt, please. Okay, thank you for that question. So the discussion wasn't exactly that. Let me clarify. So the discussion was that this site in order to meet the stormwater standards, the design that's before you currently that was originally submitted picks the site up to provide enough of a zone to infiltrate the water and keep our ledge and ground more separation. So there was no discussion to pick the to to raise the site more than than the current design. So no, there's there's no need and no revised grading has been submitted.
All right, great. Thank you. Other questions? Michael, let's maybe give other people a chance first, but we can look back to you. Don't see anyone else wanting to speak up.
I had another question, Rick.
Oh, excuse me. Esteemed board member, Stefan, you can have as many questions as you want.
Okay. The the rear portion of Building One and Building Two, where the grading is raised in the 50 to 100 foot buffer. Is there any thought about creating a fence at the 50 foot buffer line to discourage people from a lot of activity in the in the 50 foot, you know, non disturbed portion?
Mr. Leidner.
So no, a fence has not been considered in that area. What the the current design intends to have happen in that area is have a small backyard to the units. And that backyard does meander in and out of that 50 foot offset from the wetlands in some areas. And the idea is that that rear yard would be maintained and mowed as a small rear yard, but then everything beyond that would would just be let go to grow wild. So essentially, there'd just be sort of a natural barrier to keep people out of that. It wouldn't it wouldn't be a maintained area that would sort of invite people to go in there. There'll be a clear delineation in the field, but that delineation won't necessarily be right along the 50 foot line. It will be sort of an offset from the building to maintain a yard area.
Okay, thank you. Mr. Bulley, comment?
Yeah, in other towns, conservation commissions will typically require, say, a, you know, a stone bound or some other marker at that 50 foot line or whatever the local bylaw says in each town. Usually, sometimes we you can put those in to kind of demarcate that that 50 foot line. And it'll it'll tell landscapers to say, okay, I can only cut from from this line back towards the building rather than, you know, maintaining within that 50 foot buffer. So it kind of it kind of keeps the a separation without having an actual fence because because typically and I can't speak for the commission, but typically commissions don't like to see fencing, especially in the in those buffer zones, just to to ensure that, you know, animals can migrate through the site or whatnot. So that's just a recommendation, you know, you can put markers at the 50 foot if if the Conservation Commission would would like that.
All right. Could I hang on just a moment? That's certainly a worthwhile item. Gino Carlucci, I skipped past. Do we have money in the budget to pay Tetra Tech to do this work for us?
Yes, we still have money in the budget.
Great answer. Thank you.
Can I say one thing, Mr. Chairman?
Yes, Mr. Thompson.
Mr. Thompson, correct. Listen, the cons comm sent out bids to do, you know, peer review on this. And Tetra Tech's a fine company, but they're an engineering company, and they sent in the worst bid, the bid that that nobody liked. And furthermore, when the bid came in, it was for the town of Norfolk, not for the town of Sherburne. I just don't see why we should be so jumping into bed with Tetra Tech on this issue. Thank you.
Well, far from jumping into bed with Tetra Tech, the cons comm has been asked during the hearing and again specifically by me in writing to if there were good grounds to challenge Tetra Tech's qualifications here that they should be submitted to us in writing. And I hear you saying that that you didn't like their bid to the cons comm. And if you want to write that up and put it in the record, we'll we'll take a look at it. But but we will need good substantial grounds to change horses. And if the answer is, you know, it was like Rick Novak offering to do it, Rick Novak's no engineer. That's a question of competence. But but we we want something serious and on the record.
It wasn't. I didn't raise this issue. The cons comm raised it at their meeting.
I would just like to comment on that if possible.
All right, just one more comment on Tetra Tech and then everything else on Tetra Tech's going to be in the record. Yes, Mr. Lesser.
Just to answer Mr. Thompson's or reply to that alone, I have other issues to say, but I'll like I'll just say to this one that Tetra Tech's bid was certainly not bad. It was it was similar, but not as strong as some of the others in terms of what they the others were stronger. And I'll say, and that there's still to be had a formal notice of intent permitting process before the Conservation Commission to come. And we would that's when we would use the the consultant that we did pick at the time. And that at this point, given that as in the letter, this is not a full review of the project from our point of view. This is just some limit. This is some set of subset of the issues that we feel like maybe could be best addressed that can possibly be addressed within the context of the ZBA hearing with its with the limitations in terms of that it's a ZBA peer reviewer, it's not our consultant and things like that. And so therefore, we selected a few topics to that is more bounded for this kind of process here with the ZBA. And that a more a difference, a different level of scrutiny with the other consultant will be had when they come before us with their notice of intent. And I don't and I don't and I don't want people to get the any view that Tetra Tech did not give us a reasonable bid.
All right, fair enough. Fair enough. Tetra Tech, do you have anything to say to that or very briefly, very, very briefly?
Yes, I appreciate Mr. Lesser's words there. You know, I'd just like to add that we are an engineering company. And we do also have wetland scientists on on staff. So we do all types of site design and wetland science. So we are fully qualified to represent the town in this matter.
Okay. And any challenge to that, write it up, put it on the record with us. Other comments that have nothing to do with Tetra Tech's qualifications or lack thereof bearing on bearing on the wetlands issues. Mr. Leidner.
Thank you. Very quickly.
Mr. Lesser.
Very quickly, in response to Mr. Blay's previous comment about the potentially considering the no disturb bounds. I would just clarify that if if the board were thinking that condition would be beneficial, the we would ask that it be bounding the limit of work as opposed to the 50 foot line, because there are areas where the limit of work extends closer than 50 feet to the wellens, as has been discussed. And the the limiting the 50 foot buffer in the proposed in some areas would render their no yard behind some of the buildings. So we'd ask that it be the limited work as opposed to exactly on the 50 foot no disturb.
Good clarification. Thank you. Mr. Lesser, I think you've been waiting waiting for your turn.
Sure. No, I'm willing to wait longer if there's other people who want to comment, but
Why don't you start and I'll look.
I'll make a few general ones. I as to the letter there and Mr. Leidner's portrayal of it, I'm sorry if he felt like we were implying that there was no sensitivity to the wetlands in their design. That was not our intent of the letter by any means. A project of this scale has maximized use of the site to a great degree, and we wanted to make it very clear that that in that from a wetlands protection point of view, the uplands are beyond are the areas that are beyond the 100 foot buffer zone that deals with the wetlands. This project use extensively uses the buffer zone of the wetland. So I would so that therefore there are significant issues with regard to wetlands, even though I greatly appreciate the sensitivity that there's no wetland resource used. There is significant use of the buffer zone, including the 50 foot no alteration zone. So just to make that as a and so that's why you have all those kind of those that the points being made is because of its extensive use of the buffer zone, which in turn affects the wetland resource functions and what we're trying to protect. The in terms of some of the issues that we put forward here that I think that it's going to be a we'd like to see what the peer reviewer comes up with and things like that. But there are significant issues on for example, in the stormwater, it's still that issue. I'd like to just see there's been a difference of opinion about between even when the peer reviewer acknowledged that maybe there's some other things that could be looked at, taking into account the fact that significant parts of the of the stormwater management system are in the buffer zone. And I appreciate that you say that everything is done to high quality and to high water quality levels. Yes, there are certain standards that you had to meet. I'm not sure whether there are ones where you can go a little bit further, given the fact that you're in the no alteration zone and such like that. So it's not that you the use of the word high quality is a little is fine. It's you've got the standards and the question what more can be done possibly as to whether that's something that that you can be pushed to do or makes sense to do. I'll wait to hear what the peer reviewer says about that kind of thing there. I mean, and and I don't want to get into little comments like whether the I mean, the covers for a garage makes some sense. Sure, it doesn't hit the road, but the stuff is coming off the road anyway, whether it's covered by a cover or where there's water that goes underneath it eventually. There there's still that stuff is really there, but that's something to see what the peer reviewer has to say, whether there's some ways to reduce the space there. And and even as to parking, I appreciate that you might use less than the average. We're just trying to see again, given the amount of use in the buffer zone of the stormwater management system, whether it could be cut back if there were some changes there. I you said before, the tweakings of the system, or somebody else did. I'd like to just see whether that's what it amounts to from the peer reviewer. And and I appreciate the fact that, right, we haven't had a chance to review the stormwater stuff there. And it'll be and I'd like to feel like in some of the comments there about whether you've looked at since at the at the post development hydrology and to what extent it's sensitive to the different parts of the wetlands. Because we've had other projects where they've met it in aggregate, the post development, but then there were just different flows to different parts of the different areas of wetlands. And if that and if you've done that kind of work, we'll hopefully hear that from the peer reviewer. And that's that's that would be good to hear. Um, and, and that's, that's, that would be good to hear. The, uh, um, as to moving on to some of the other stuff there, uh, right, I mean, I'll be curious to see. We'll find out what the peer reviewer says about things like, uh, uh, I mean, we're, we're charged. That, uh, we're charged for dealing with wildlife, with wildlife habitat impacts, um, and. It doesn't, um. I mean, I, I don't want to get into disingenuous comments, I mean, I just, I almost don't want to take the bait or react to the idea that. You have two wetlands that were connected before, basically with un, undeveloped properties, and in some cases, un, untouched. Buffer zones, um, there, and to say that now with, with all the buildings and roadways and everything else between them. That we feel that wildlife will be able to make their way between the two wetland systems, it's just a little disingenuous, I won't say anything more than that. Other than, I, we recognize that there will be some significant adverse impact to that particular, uh, interest. Of the wetlands that we're supposed to, uh, address, but, uh. Not everything is perfect, but we don't have to go too far in terms of saying that there's no problems with it, um. And we'll see what the other peer review says, and it'll also come up in the NOI review process. Um, the landscape process going on to that one, um. Again, is right, it's going to be a tricky balance between the fact of what kind of yard you want to have around these places, we've run into this before with projects. Like this, that build right up to the, uh, to the edges of buffers, uh, fifty foot buffer zone and others. Uh, and, right, it's a tough one about the fact that all of that, to the extent that we're trying to. That wetlands function well when the buffer zones function well and are preserved, you avoid, in our local bylaw, we have the presumption. That significant changes in the no alteration zone will cause adverse effect in the buffer zone. Um, and there's a lot of work being done for the grading to, and, and whatnot. Uh, and, uh, and taken up in the, in that no alteration zone as well as the buffer zone as a whole. Somehow doing more with what it is, we'll see what the peer reviewer comes up with, with the fact that whether that kind of buffer zone. To what extent it could be maximized, the amount of the kind of landscaping plan that's put in place and, and maximizing the amount of that. With some markers, um, certain kinds of fences are acceptable to us in the sense that they don't impede wildlife. As opposed to a chain link fence, as opposed to a spurt rail fence and things like that, monuments are always nice to, to be more permanent. Um, but right, the question is, is whether it can be, uh. It wasn't clear to me from the previous landscape plan that some of the stuff that you've mentioned here would be provided. But it would be a matter of, uh, a more detailed plan here, if it's not done here, or if it has to be done in the, uh, NOI process as well or reviewed there. About that it could be in terms of density of plantings and what kind of different herbaceous and shrub and other kind of layers are really. Maximize the buffer zone value and, and protecting the wetlands there in terms of whether it's wildlife or just even water infiltration, water filtration. Um, but there's usually a lot more detail given in a, uh, in a true landscape plan under, uh, the wetlands permitting process. We'll see how far we can go and, and how far the limits are, because you do have a lot of, that's part of the issue. Of, yeah, when I look behind some of these buildings. What it is behind building two that could be done to minimize that, uh, the distance there and how much could be landscape and then fenced off and protected. But I think we'll be coming back to a lot of this after we hear the peer review, and then we'll also have another issue there, but, uh. Um, and I do appreciate, again, I'll, I'll end up on a more positive note, yes, I appreciate there are no. Buildings in the no alteration zone and the wetland resources have not been built on, but there's still significant, uh, building there.
Uh, Mr. Buley, I'm, I'm sure you've been taking that all in and, uh, will, will consider it in your, in your remarks to us. Uh, Mr. Buley, in the, in the first instance, and then the board in the second instance, have the unhappy task of balancing. Um, uh, the desirability of various changes to the plans that might work better for wildlife. Or drainage or, or protection of, of, of no build zones against, um, the need for affordable housing, uh, in the region. Um, and then the likely outcome, likely, likely reaction attack to any, uh, any conditions, uh, or, or turned down that we. We base on things like wildlife or, or, or stormwater, um, so. We'll, we'll look to you to guide us.
Noted.
Mr. Chairman, can I comment on some of Michael's comments?
Uh, briefly, yes, please, sir.
Okay, uh, the planting that we are proposing in that letter is not currently on the plan. So we will have that planting in the wetland buffer areas added to the plan, including in the detention basis for our next meeting. And one other item that, uh, was mentioned many times by the CONCOM. Concerned about some of the impervious area and that we consider reducing the depth of the parking spaces to eighteen feet. We are willing to do that if we get consensus from this board, and we'd be happy to have that ready for the next meeting if you so prefer.
I think it would be helpful to have that at the table, speaking solely for myself, you, you know, the more of these issues that we can move to this. Move into the, uh, their agreed category, the better.
Okay, we'll take care of that.
Um, other members, other comments from other members of the, I see a hand up, uh, Mr. Brezhnev Hand.
Yeah, my name's Captain, I live at one twenty-six college. And, um, with related relation to the amount of activity in the, uh, the buffer zone, has there been any thought given to the potential impacts on the. Uh, local water table, which is already quite high, and especially the Meadowbrook and Natick side of College Village.
Mr. Leidner.
I can address that, uh, if I may, uh, yes, the, the stormwater, uh, management system. Design has taken the water table into account, we actually went out there and did extensive, um, test. Uh, test bit exploration throughout the site, documented the water table and have maintained the, um, the required. Uh, separation to the water table and, um, we've spread the stormwater management systems out. Throughout the site in a way as not to focus, uh, everything into one area. Um, so the, the water table, uh, situation, we, we realize there's a relatively shallow water table out there, and we have taken that into account.
And is that also account for the potential impact with the, the buildings within the buffer zone, which. You're probably going to offset some of the current water there that has to then, then be distributed somewhere else, not just a stormwater mediation.
Mr. Chair.
Please. It does account for them, uh, so these, I'm not sure if you meant the foundations would be displacing water. Uh, but these buildings do not have basements, uh, so the, uh, the slabs that they'll be built on will be up above the water table. Um, and I'm not sure if you've attended previous meetings, but the site itself, the grades are going to be picked up from existing. Uh, so, so as not to be building within the, the existing water table.
Okay.
Mr. Lesser, I think, had his hand up. By, by the way, for those of you who can, raise your hand in, in the Zoom function, that's, that's great, if you can't, uh, wave at the camera and, and Genie and I will try to see it.
No, sorry, sorry, I'm doing it that way, uh.
All good.
Try to add a little bit more to the last, to Mr. Brezhnev Hand, um. That, if I think I hear your concern about the, about the amount of water being. Where there's water being shifted from the site there onto neighbors, so to speak. Um, that the stormwater standards that they have to meet for the project, when we talk about this pre and post hydrology. Um, is essentially they're supposed to, uh, do the stormwater and infiltration onsite. Such that the water leaving the site is similar to the water that was leaving the site before the project was in place. So that it shouldn't change what, so if you have problems before, you'll have problems after. Uh, or you don't have problems, you shouldn't have problems, uh, that it's, that, that, the, the regulations are written to just sort of. To sort of reach for the status quo, um, there, if that is a little maybe another way to answer your question.
Some, someone, someone said they had a question. Okay. Alright, um, well, board members, unless you have further commentary on this, I think we're in a position to move on and. And try to pick a meeting date somewhere in the two week timeframe to give Mr. Buley a chance to do his job. And then we could all wind up by throwing arms and throw rocks at him. Metaphorically, not, not, not literally.
If I could add, Mr. Mr. Chair, if I could say something.
Please.
Um, I'm actually going to be going on a paternity leave soon, um, so we're hoping to get the letter in in two weeks. But I do have Sarah White with me, uh, this evening, she will be taking over, uh, my role. Uh, while I'm out on paternity leave, um, but until then, we, you know, we will be, um. You know, we will be reviewing it with our wetland scientists and, uh, and hopefully getting a, you know, a letter over to you shortly.
We'll look forward to hearing from Ms. White, and we appreciate that your other role is far more important than anything you could do for us, good luck with that, sir.
Yes, thank you.
Um. Alright, so. Two weeks is the week of March twenty, uh, March, uh, uh, week of April twenty-sixth, that's after school vacation for those. For whom that is relevant, um. We do something in the middle of that week, board members?
Fine with me. That's fine with me, April twenty-eighth, uh, Wednesday, the twenty-eighth, or Thursday, the twenty-ninth, it's fine.
Alright, Wednesday, the twenty-eighth, um, any, um. Uh, Sarah White, looks like you're going to be up to have something for us before then, but it looks like you're confident you can do so. So you're nodding yes, so we'll take that as a yes, okay, great, um. Applicant, April, a continuance to April twenty-eighth, work for you?
Yes, that's fine.
Alright. Um. In that case, I'm going to move that we, uh, continue the hearing, hold on, Michael, before, just before we wrote that. If we continue the hearing to April twenty-eighth, uh, twenty twenty-one, can I have a second for that, and then during discussion, we'll take Michael.
Second.
Alright, so moved and seconded to continue to April twenty-eighth, but this hearing is still open, Mr. Lesser.
I was wondering if we could change gears, uh, whether beyond the wetlands, um, and I could speak Michael Lesser as. As the energy committee, um, and, uh, whether I could bring up the, uh, an issue that whether I could. I could write something in and whether for the, uh, Baystone to consider. And you to consider whether there's a possibility of, I'm always angling for a little bit more energy efficiency and a little more sustainability here, and I. Keep trying to find little angles here, and I know that, that Baystone has been willing to try to do something, and they're waiting to see how the costs of the project all emerge. As to how far they can go on doing some more innovative kind of things, uh, I want to know whether to bring up the idea whether I could. Whether you would entertain, uh, and for the developer to think about whether conditionings of things like. That all appliances should be either Energy Star or Water Sense, which is a rating for being more efficient water usage. Um, whether that's the kind of thing that, uh, I would like to maybe, uh, suggest. And maybe I'll just get to the next meeting, uh, and how you, how to do that kind of thing.
Certainly, a writing in advance in the next meeting would be terrific, um, because then that will give the board the benefit of. Uh, the developer's response, certainly, I hope you heard me last time, that to the extent that, uh, i- these energy efficiency. Uh, items are going to significantly affect economics, our, uh, ability to condition the project. Uh, on this, given that it's a affordable housing project is, uh, beyond extremely limited, I think Jonathan will correct me that it's non-existent. Um, so we need to be careful.
Heard that, I'm hoping that there might be some receptivity, uh, even from the developer's side, seeing these things are. Are, uh, possibly very low cost, you can go buy a WaterSense toilet for a hundred dollars too, uh, but whatever, I will try.
Right, right.
Next time.
Alright, um, unless there's further discuss, uh, Mr. Pitch, do you have something to say?
No, I mean, uh, Michael has the power of persuasion, he can write a letter, uh, to, uh. The developer, but, uh, as, um, you've said, Mr. Chairman. Uh, it's very unlikely that we would, uh, condition our. Order on, uh, energy efficiency requirements.
Right, the, the leading case, uh, I see Mr. Murphy there, we'll give him another shout out, his, that's your case, the stoke case, right? Um, said the towns can, can turn these things down on, uh, I'll have the, I have the wrong term, but essentially extremely serious. Uh, public health reasons, I think in the stoke case, it was contamination of groundwater from the septic system. Uh, I think running wells dry probably gets into that same category, but it, it can't just be, um. Things that hack will view as wishless items, Mr. Murphy, you can probably correct me where I got that wrong.
No, Mr. Chairman, that's exactly right, I think the board's prerogative is, as always, act in the best interest of the town. To protect what are defined by the statute as, uh, local concerns. And, uh, you know, in, in the order of priority, uh, someone's drinking water is a very high priority. And other things might be lesser priority, such as perhaps low flow fixtures. Uh, but again, I think everyone has the idea that this is a balance and. That's, that's kind of the touchstone.
Got it, thank you, sir, okay, um, moved and seconded to continue the hearing to April twenty-eighth. Absent, uh, a lot of people waving their hands and saying we shouldn't do that, that's my next move, so. I don't see much of anybody, okay, um. Board members all in favor of continuing to the twenty-eighth, say aye. Aye, I guess we have to do it by roll call, Novak, aye.
Stefan, aye.
Pitch, aye.
Well, that means the nays are a null set, alright, so we're continued to the twenty-eighth, thank you all for your, uh, for your attention to this important matter. We appreciate it, stay safe.
Thank you.
I want, I want everybody to be vaccinated by the time we next come together, so get to work on that.
Thank you.
Good night.
Good night.